I seen that email.
I seen that email.
Well, Mayor, the numbers are stated.
Well, the numbers are still working, Mayor, so that's a good sign.
I'm good.
I think I saw somebody walk in here.
How you doing there, Mr. Esch?
You don't, man? Long time.
They're all on.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's not on me like this at halftime.
No, we're all good. All the lights are on, so.
Yes. Give what I didn't like how it was.
No.
There's like blank cans. But that's good. Bills are on the schedule. Yeah, I don't like the way I put it right now. Yeah, I mean, it's a little early to be like that. Two thirty-nine, twenty-two. How would you prove? There's a few areas where some of it is low, low, much.
We have to put this in there.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending our City of Uniontown Regular City Council Meeting of February 2nd, 2023. Roll call?
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Vasaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An executive session was held today at 4:30 for legal matters. Do we have any comments on agenda items only? State your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Carmina Taylor. For the purposes of this meeting, I'm here as a statewide advocate for my group. And I, actually, Union Town has now become a case study for my research. And I have questions about Resolution 22, 23, 24, and 27. I guess Tim's going to answer this. So I think the public needs to understand why these are happening at this moment. And I believe these topics have come up in the past, at least Resolution 22 and 23. And I just wondered what that was about. And can we get clarification on who the new appointee for Deputy Controller is? I know that this council has had a history of nepotism. So I'm just wondering, is that another case right here, Tim? So could you answer those questions?
So, yeah, I'll answer questions and comment after your comment periods.
That's good enough. So I don't know how much time I have left. So what I think is really significant and why I'm here is because I haven't been able to be here. And as I've observed your meetings in the past few months, I've seen an intertwining of issues and all related to the operations of this council. And I think what's really important that I'd like to convey with some of these changes that are happening here, and I think, Mayor, in July, you were quoted in the paper that the allegations that were made in reference to the Treasurer's Office, that there were systems and mechanisms that weren't in place that probably caused some of the gaps and inconsistencies. So I'm here to get clarity in terms of moving forward. I do have questions that are not on the agenda after that. So that's all I have, Tim. I just want clarity on these topics. You got the numbers, Tim?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and twenty-seven.
Right. Can I stand here while you answer? Are you going to let me sit down?
No, we'll go ahead and sit down, and then I can answer, yeah.
Are you going to answer for them?
What's that?
Are you going to answer for them?
Well, it's up to council if they'd like me to answer those questions.
I'm sure they do.
Certainly, no problem answering those for council. Is council okay with me answering those?
Absolutely.
So to go through those in turn, 22 is a proposed ordinance that would actually increase the bonding requirements for various city offices. So currently, there are bond requirements in place for a number of city offices. Many of those are required by the Third Class City Code and/or the local tax collection law. Unfortunately, the bond amounts, so the actual amount that's covered by those bonds, has not necessarily been changed in many, many years. So in evaluating those, particularly in light of the recent bond claim that had to be made for the loss of funds in connection with the Treasurer's Office, the city had to reevaluate those bond amounts. And so that ordinance is intended to increase the bond amount requirements, just increase the amounts, to ensure that there's compliance with the Third Class City Code in having an ordinance that formally increases those bond amounts.
So, Tim, it's not about increasing the number of people who are being bonded, but just the coverage amount?
No, so that keeps those people consistent. And once again, it also just, it increases the actual bond amounts that are required. It's different for each position based on the amount of cash, or not cash, but funds each specific office or employee may be anticipated to handle. 23 is a proposed ordinance. 23 would be a proposed ordinance that actually eliminates cash payments being received by the city. So in connection with the audit that was performed by the forensic auditor, and then subsequently with respect to the criminal charges that had recently come out, it was determined that the loss of funds was about $106,750, or cash funds. So those were actual cash dollars, not checks, not money orders. And so that serving as the reason for the loss of those funds and the source of those lost funds, in order to enact stricter controls, the ordinance that you'll see there for 23 actually would no longer enable the city to accept cash payments for real estate taxes. Item 24 is a change to the Treasurer's Compensation. This is also under the Third Class City Code and under the local tax collection law. So there's a deadline for when that has to be done, and it has to be done before February 15th of the year in which anybody would be running for the position of tax collector. So at this meeting, in order to meet that deadline, council has to enact an ordinance to change that compensation. One of the things that the Treasurer's Compensation is based on is the amount of work that's involved in a connection with that office. And so in terms of streamlining some procedures and also no longer accepting cash payments, the amount of work that's associated with that office will be substantially reduced, which is similar to Connelsville, which is one of the sister cities of Union Town here, so the only sister city in the county here. And it's much more in line with the compensation that's paid in other third-class cities like Connelsville that operate in a similar manner. So that's in connection with the Treasurer's Compensation, which would reduce that. I do want to point out with that, that that ordinance, if it goes into effect by a vote of council and is enacted, that would only go into effect next year. So it is not effective immediately. It is effective only on the subsequent term for an elected city treasurer. So it would not affect any current compensation that's paid to the city treasurer currently. And with respect to item 27, Elaine Otterstrom, she is, I forget what her title is exactly. She's current city employee, sewage supervisor. She's currently the sewage supervisor for the city, and so she's a longtime city employee, has managerial oversight, and has been also overseeing cash and funds as they've been going to the bank. So she does have the ability to, and the knowledge and experience of monitoring, handling cash funds and finances in general for that department, which is why she would be particularly well-suited with respect to everybody here at the building for that position.
But, Tim, the question was about deputy. Was she related to anybody in the city?
I mean, that would be a question. I don't know the answer to that. That would be a question for individual council members. I'm not aware of any.
Does anybody have the answer for that?
Is...
She might be related to someone in the city that lives in the city.
But nobody here.
She's not re-
Is she related to anyone that works for the city?
She's not re-
She's a relative. She's a half-sister to my mother.
So the question on their State Ethics Act is whether or not she would be an immediate family member of any member of council. So the question is, is she an immediate family member of anybody here on council?
No.
No.
And?
Yep.
Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, that's all I have.
So before we get the meeting started today, guys, just real quick, wanted to go over the January profit loss. In everybody's mailbox, I have your respective departments. I'm not going to go individually over the departments. If you have any questions, after meeting, you would like to go over those, if you have any questions, we can. Starting off the year for January, rolling into February here, I'm not liking where we're already starting at. We are, of course, we're at the time of period of the year where we're using retained revenues to pay for bills and pay for, you know, for wages and whatnot. So if, you know, if we could, and I know we have some things on the agenda, things that I don't personally agree with, especially with all the spending that we did last year, we could have, there's these purchases we could have made last year. Going forward this year, we really have to follow the budget that we lined up, or we're going to be in another position like we were at the beginning of this year, where we're going to have to make hard and tough decisions. And, you know, every month, I'm going to come here and I'm going to plead with you guys to make sure that we are controlling as much as we can. Of course, we can't help emergency fixes, but we should not be classing any type of fix that we need as emergency, unless it truly is emergency in that nature. All right?
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasurer for the month of January 2023, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes, received.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept a minutes of the January 13th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered, products procured for the City of Union Town into ratified, well, for January 2023 invoices. The General Fund, $56,438.84. Sewer Fund, $111,369.81. Recreation, $169.39. Highway, $11,365.40. Off-Street, $47.35. Recycling, $2,000. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to adopt Bill Number 1766, Proposed Ordinance Number 1746, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, setting required bond amounts and bond requirements for city officials and employees, establishing an effective date and repealing other inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof. Mr. Billy?
So before we, before I take the vote on this, just to clarify what we are raising these bonds up to. Treasurer is going to be in the amount of $750,000. Deputy Treasurer in the amount of $750,000. City Treasurer Office employees, $500,000. Directors of Accounts and Finance, which Chief Fiscal Officer, $250,000. City Clerk, which is the Deputy Fiscal Officer, $250,000. Assistant City Clerk, which is the assistant to the chief and the deputy, for $250,000. Sewage and License Office employees, also at $250,000. The City Controller at $250,000, and the Deputy City Controller at also $250,000. I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to adopt Bill Number 1767, Proposed Ordinance Number 1747, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, prohibiting the acceptance of cash payments and setting acceptable forms of payment for amounts owed to or received by the city. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to adopt Bill Number 1768, Proposed Ordinance Number 1748, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, setting and establishing the compensation of the city treasurer. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes. Mr. Billy, how much savings is that for the city?
Well, currently, where we're at is just under $39,000 annual for the salary of the city treasurer. And with this move, this ordinance we have adopted tonight, it has now cut that down to $15,000. You still have the fringe benefits that the city offers through benefits and 401K and et cetera.
Very good. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize meetings with the Sons of Italy for the purpose of discussing plans and terms for hosting the Italian festival in the City of Union Town in late August 2023. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
You know, I think this is a perfect example of when you have community organizations that come together to do these types of events. You know, the city is a venue to do these events. Should never be the actual, you know, party that is putting these events on. You know, so, you know, I'd like to thank everybody that got to the table with the, with, you know, in getting this back in, truly becoming an Italian festival. Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes. And thanks, guys, from the Sons of Italy for attending this evening, too, and forward to working with you.
And also, too, that I am also looking forward to when we can bring, you know, an ethnic festival where it's all, you know, not just one, I believe, the county. We're, you know, such diversity in the county that we, you know, we should be showcasing everything. Although, we do get great representation at the Italian festivals, you know, from every nationality as well. But thank you, guys.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the Public Works Department to begin removal of railroad ties behind Auto Land Station 1439 and related expenses not to exceed $15,000 for extension of the Sheepskin Trail. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
So this $15,000 expenditure that we're having, it's beginning our, what we're calling our Phase Two of the Sheepskin Trail, which through an agreement with the PUC in the railroad, we were able to garner, I believe, what was it, $220,000? $215,000. And so this $15,000 is where that is actually coming out. So, and we're looking to move forward with this project in using this railroad money and also using, you know, grant funds from the SMART Grant to also continue this portion of the Sheepskin Trail from Fayette all the way to the North Union border. And in talking with county officials and sheepskin, people in with the Sheepskin Trail, there's, it's a huge push to get this project completed and to add into the recreational attraction of Fayette County that Connelsville and other small trail towns benefit from. Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
John Podolsky, thank you for taking this on. I know you're strapped for help, but this really is very important to the city, and I just want to say thank you for working with us on this, and we appreciate everything that you do. Of course, I vote yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to appoint Elaine Otterstrom as Deputy Controller for the City of Union Town effective immediately. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
How long has she been, sorry, how long has she been an employee with the city now?
She's been here about four years, and then before that, she was gone a couple of years, but she was probably here seven years before that. She was Deputy Treasurer at one point, and she was also Deputy Controller once before.
Okay, thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to rehire Joe Walkus and Parks and Recreation at Bailey Park for the Union Town High School baseball season and summer league baseball programs for field and park maintenance from February 13th, 2023, to October 1st, 2023, at a rate of $300 per week. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
This man works his tail off. He does above and beyond what he's required to do, and I would, we'd be foolish to say no. We were very, very lucky to have him, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, also to add to Councilman Vasaki's comments that Joe does a wonderful job down there, him and his crew, they do a wonderful job taking care of Bailey Park and the other areas that come under his wing with the Union Town School District. So, yeah, he's, does an excellent job there at Bailey Park. Thank you, Joe.
Mayor Gurke?
I have to agree with Councilman Shuhon and Vasaki about Joe Walkus. I don't know where we'd be without him, and he just keeps us moving forward at Bailey Park. Thanks, Joe. Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize City of Union Town Fire Chief Scott Kohn to participate in the Deferred Retirement Option Plan draft effective March 16th, 2023. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve a quote for service and parts from Jeff Langley to repair decorative light poles on Main Street at a cost of $3,500 to $4,000. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve a quote for service and parts from Jeff Langley to repair, install LED lights for two light poles at Bailey Park at a cost of $2,000. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to adopt the Fayette County Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Union Town and Fayette County for the purpose of detailing the annual fee and cost-sharing arrangements for operating, maintaining, and using the Fayette County Walk-In Fingerprint Center. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town declaring the intent of the City of Union Town to dispose of certain municipal records in conformity with prior city resolutions and the Municipal Records Manual. Whereas by virtue of the resolution passed the same date, the City of Union Town declared its intent to follow the schedules and procedures for disposition of records as set forth in the Municipal Records Manual approved by the Local Government Records Committee on December 16th, 2008, as amended on July 23rd, 2009, and March 28th, 2019. And whereas, in accordance with Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be further resolved that the City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited records, Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorize the disposition of the following public records as attached.
Yeah. For council and the public, the Municipal Records Act puts specific procedures in place for the disposal of municipal records. And so in order to dispose of formal records that the city has, the city is required to compile a list documenting and identifying those records, and then having council formally approve that at a council meeting. So the purpose of this resolution is to comply with that act. In my understanding, these are, in some cases, very old records that are just taking up space. So that act also has retention schedules, so it tells you how long you have to keep certain records for. And this resolution also identifies that and confirms that none of these records fall within those required retention periods, so.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of parts for catapult- of parts for Caterpillar High-Lip from Cleveland Brothers Caterpillar at a cost of seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Mr. Vassaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shulon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a quote from George Smalley Company for parts and installation of LED floodlights at the Public Works Garage at a cost of three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Kim, I just want to speak on this real quick. There's seven lights. We were down to three working last year and now there's none. They're, they're, they're gone. They need to be replaced and it's just, it's safety wise, if back where the, where the ash powder, where the, the salt and just, we, we just, we have to be able to see, just, not just for safety, but just to do their job.
Mr. Vassaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shulon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
And, and, and I'll, just to explain the reason here is, you know, last year with the major purchases that we had, you know, instead of having those purchases, the, the dump bed, the, the new Dodge with the dump bed, you know, without purchasing that, we would have had the freed up resources last year to take care of this one, it should have been taken care of last year, and not waiting until we have no lights out there. We, we need to begin to be more proactive in, in our continued maintenance and our upkeep of our buildings and not wait till they, you know, till everything has burned out. We need to be a little bit smarter, not a little, but we need to be a lot smarter at the spending that we're doing. And we also have to be able to look into the future and try to future forecast what, you know, what our expenditures are. And that's why that the budget profit losses are given to you gentlemen, and you gentlemen have, it's an open door for anyone at any time to come in and request this information so that you, you guys could know. And also it's important that when we're spending, that we're also going inside the bunch of line items and we're also taking down out of our budget so we know where we're at. Whenever I was over to Fire Department with Chief Griffith, that this is something that we both did on a regular basis. And, you know, and we followed that budget to, to a T. And, and at that moment, that budget was one point one and now we have a two million dollar budget. So, and that's what getting into pay increases and health card, healthcare costs and every, all the fringe and associated costs with that. Again, thank you for that time, that, that, okay, thank you.
I would just like to say that, that I did get a quote last year on the light to give replaced, like that quote being attracted, would have to do it.
That was probably after we spent close to a hundred thousand dollars on a piece of equipment. Do we have this piece of equipment yet? The Dodge and the dump? I know, I know we've been making payments on it, so. So just going forward, I need you to be extremely mindful of what we're spending and not, and making sure that the guys aren't out there and we're just breaking things just to, just to purchase them, okay? And that's really what we, we need to be focusing on. So, you know, we can go back and forth or we can wait for the, we can wait for your report at the end of the meeting and then you can talk about those things at the end of the meeting, or you could have talked about them at the beginning of the meeting, but we didn't. Okay.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a pipe and cable locator from HDSFM at a cost of two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and two cents. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shulon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Steve, if you could, could you explain a little bit on this cable locator, what the significance of this is?
Yeah, when any kind of work is done, you have to do a PA one call, whether you're putting in a mailbox, swimming pool, or if somebody's putting in a new sewer line, anything from private residential, anything small all the way up. What that does is every single utility has to come out and mark where their lines are. That way there's no accidental hits on gas lines, water lines, electric lines, anything like that. So it's, it's the company's responsibility for each one of those utilities to mark those properly and safely so there are no accidents. We are now responsible for the wires, the traffic loop wires in the intersections. We don't have any way to track them or locate them without the proper location equipment. So that's why we're doing that. And John, how much on average is it to have one of those traffic loops repaired? Do you know off the top of your head?
Have just the traffic repaired and replaced, twelve thousand. I don't really know what, how the city operated in the past. I guess you just got lucky and contractors always absorb the cost, but I did know that the utility companies are in, have, paid for something.
Should have been marked. Right, so the, the equipment is a fraction of what it's going to cost to repair one. So when we get a call to respond to the one calls, we have proper equipment to mark out the lines, sewer line and the traffic loop for the signals. So that's, that's what that's up for. And that is, that's one of the lower expensive ones for the quality, I guess I could say. These are recommended by a lot of people that use them. There's a lot more bales of whistles, expensive ones, but it's just basic what we need just to get us through so we can mark these lines appropriately because we can't, we can't absorb that kind of a cost. That's, that's, it's astronomical. Like you said, I'm not sure what has been in the past, but we have been notified that that is our responsibility and we have to mark those. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Vassaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Dylan Sabona as the City of Uniontown Parking Enforcement Officer effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-two for up to twenty-nine hours per week at an hourly rate of thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Mr. Shulon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Parking enforcement is coming back to the City of Uniontown. We won't be able to just park wherever we want to and, and it won't be the, the wild side of Uniontown downtown in parking. So yes, yes, we need this very badly here. Thank you.
Mr. Vassaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
I'd like to thank Chief DeWitt for putting this together and I agree wholeheartedly with what Councilman DeWitt had to say about working in the City of Uniontown.
Free throw.
Thank you, Chief DeWitt, and I vote yes.
And that's all I have.
Monthly reports. Fire Department, Pastor Winfrey.
An absentee Chief Kohn, he wasn't able to make it today. The Uniontown Fire Department responded to the following incidents in the month of January. Seven related incidents was included, two building fires, one trash fire, two cooking fires contained to the stove top and two scorched burns, but no active fire in a building and was out on arrival. Fourteen rescue related incidents with ten motor vehicle collisions, three vehicle versus pedestrian accidents, one extradition of all or injured person from a building. Five, fifteen hazardous condition incidents, including two natural gas leaks, nine power lines down, two electrical emergencies and two building collapses. Eleven service related incidents, including one person in distress, two water line breaks, one cover assignment to another fire company and seven lockouts of, or gain access. Two hazardous materials incidents, ten fire alarms activations, five weather related emergencies, three witness fire drill in a public facility, which included faculty, staff training, pre-incident planning and building familiarization. Three public fire prevention education programs. Also training conducted or taken for the month. The department had a total of fifty-five man hours of training for the month of January. The Fire Department will be participating with the Police Department in Fayette EMS for a first aid and CPR class on February the sixth. Apparatus updates, no apparatus due for service or inspection as of yet. The first coming due in May. Hopefully we will not have any emergency repairs needed between then. In May, our aerial device testing will also be due. This is the annual requirement as per our industry standards, particularly the National Fire Protection Association and Insurance Services Office. Vehicles that require renewal of Pennsylvania DOT Vehicle Administration have all been renewed and our supervising councilman has given us a letter on file to authorize us to do this annually. There is no cost to do this for emergency vehicles. Miscellaneous, the department held a department-wide meeting in January, discussed and outlined goals, review and update procedures and discuss training and evaluations for the coming year. We have a lot planned. Personnel shall continue to be involved in community events along with our outreach programs and public fire education and pre-accident, incident planning as well. Chief Kohn has entered, turned his letter of intent to enter the Deferred Retirement Option Plan Drop Plan. I state the final day of work will be March sixteenth, twenty twenty-seven and will conclude March seventeenth, twenty twenty-seven. Lastly, our social hall on Dunbar Street was owned and operated by the Uniontown Fire Firemen's Boosters Organization sustained heavy roof damage in the last store. Bingo had to be canceled last week because of it. The roof repairs are taking, are taking place and we'll be able to have bingo this evening. So bingo this evening.
Bingo.
Respectfully submitted by Scott Ed. Call. Thank you.
Can I make a comment on one of those things? You had the, the vehicle versus pedestrian hits on there. I don't, just everyone, I'm just reminding everyone to be careful and be alert. I live here, but I also work here and I'm on the streets all day and people do not wait for the crosswalks. They just step out. So, I mean, I don't, it's frustrating, but I don't want to be in an accident where I'm, even if it's not my fault, where I hurt somebody or kill somebody. So we just have to be aware. I, I don't know why people just decide to walk in traffic, but they do. So just, just remind people just to be aware.
Thank, thank you Pastor. Police Department, Chief DeWitt?
All right, so during the month of January, the Uniontown Police Department responded to a total of seven hundred and sixty-five calls for service. The breakdown of some of those calls included fourteen vehicle accidents, thirteen assaults, twenty-three welfare checks, forty-two domestics, seven assist fire, fire calls, eighteen disorderly conducts, twenty-one emergency medical six assists, sixteen assist other police departments, sixteen harassments, two shots fired calls, nineteen alarms, fifty-five suspicious persons, activities or vehicles, twenty-five thefts, five burglaries, sixteen animal complaints, five overdoses where one officer administered Narcan resulting in a life-saving turnaround. Officers made a total of thirty-five criminal arrests, issued fifteen non-traffic citations and sixty-four traffic citations. We also conducted our normal vehicle foot patrols of city parks as well as the Sheepskin Trail in South Union Township. During the month of January, code enforcement closed twelve cases, opened twenty new cases and is carrying over eight from December. As you all will see, when you came in through the front doors, the old YMCA is currently has barricades across the sidewalk. If you're not familiar with the way old buildings are set up, John, maybe you can elaborate on this a little bit more. But a lot of these older buildings in the city or larger cities have their, their basements extend and the sidewalk is kind of candidly built over, correct? To that degree. So I know John brought this to my attention. We also received some citizen complaints on it. I went over with Fred last month. You can actually see a fifty cent piece hole where you can see twelve feet down into the ground, so that's why that's barricaded off. So if you were walking over there, please don't walk in it. I don't want you falling into a basement of an old building. We're currently waiting for K two to conduct their engineering study before we take further official action, which I'm sure will include remediation for somebody. Also during the month of January, officers were investigating three separate armed robberies at the BFS gas station on Morgantown Street in the city. Officers actually last night finalized the weeks-long investigation into those three robberies. Multiple citizens, home security cameras and ring doorbell cameras assisted us, which led us to a residence in South Union Township, South Union Township where a search warrant was executed on the suspect's home. Evidence was seized as a result of that search warrant, which led to their arrest and subsequent confessions. That occurred last night. The state police also made two arrests relevant to their business they had in South Union Township were hit. So these individuals did five armed robberies. Were just taken off the streets last night. You'll see a press release on that, I'm, I'm sure either tonight or tomorrow from the state police with a joint task force for that. But council, any questions? Oh, and you guys, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this. You saw the intergovernmental agreement on that, on that they, the council passed on the last agenda, just so I can brief the citizens on this to a degree as well. You've heard me talk before where we were supposed to lose the Fayette County Booking Center in its entirety. It's going to go to the new jail in October. October first is actually the hard deadline where we were supposed to lose all operations of the Booking Center, which is a funding stream that we rely on to keep officers on the ground, to give us as much exposure as we can to our citizens. This new agreement will have a little bit different look. It won't be taking in custody people anymore, so the state police won't drop people off to us in the evenings, on the weekends or holidays. They will go to the jail. However, anyone who is arrested and not fingerprinted will have to come to our facility to be fingerprinted as a walk-in like they do currently, which will still allow us to leave staffing levels where they're currently sitting on and be a revenue stream into the city that is ultimately obviously always needed. And in any way we can't help, we will. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Director of Public Works, Mr. Podolsky?
Hi, good evening, everyone. For this month, a total sewage collections was two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents. I know that the women in that office are always thrilled when they can reach over two hundred thousand, so they're pretty excited about that number. As far as the sewage department, we respond to approximately five to ten backed up or suspiciously backed up sewer lines a week and that's a never-ending thing. The water company's installing a new line on Jefferson Street and being we have such an old system, an old mapping system, sometimes there is unexpected hits on our line that we have no idea where they are and they're not on the maps. But luckily the water, we have a good relationship with the water company and the contractors are usually more than willing to help us along with fixing it as long as we're able to provide the materials for the issue. I know that there's been at least four different hits on Jefferson Street now that we've had to deal with. I don't know if any of you were notified. I was just recently notified that Kerr Street Project's done with the separation of the storm line. There were some additional costs that they had to approve. I guess I just went through the engineer. It equaled to approximately sixteen thousand dollars over the original quote for the job or bid. For the street department, they're trying their best to keep up with the potholes as that's a never-ending battle. We had a couple of snowstorms, they were quick to get on it and the snow came down quick and I think our streets looked good during those storms. Other than that, it's all a half.
Sure, we had that snow, I was driving to the city and it was, it was a little sketchy and it was clear, you know, right outside of the city and it was pretty rough, so you guys did a good job on that thing.
Thank you.
I have to agree with you, Councilman Vassaki, and I, and I get, John knows I get phone calls, he always get the bottom end of the phone calls. He's always responsive, but I got a lot of compliments on the road. I may get a chance to tell you, John, one people in the city appreciate what you're doing, we surely do too. Thank you so much.
You did a great job.
So John, on that Kerr Street Project that, so the sixty thousand dollars, is that that overage, is that the city's portion or is that the, is that what's also going to be the shared?
I believe it's going to be shared.
Because I knew there was going to be some overages because we, we had a meeting and we actually voted on, on that project with the anticipation that those overages also are deferred out of our refund from, from the Greater Sewage Authority. Am I correct in my saying that?
Thank you.
The redevelopment authority, anyone here for a report for that? If not, it's time for public comment.
Before that, Mayor, I wanted to notice that we have Greg Crossley here. He's with the Fayette County. He's with the Fayette County Emergency Management Agency. He's the director. We passed Resolution Thirty-two to adopt the Fayette County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Greg, did you want to add anything to that, or?
Just, well, thanks for the promotion, Joe.
Sure.
My nice in the city of Uniontown, where it's depending on where they're, my good friend, the county director, Roy Shipp.
My master.
But, I really appreciate the hazard mitigation plan required by the central government and in order to get any kind of hazard mitigation fund. There's a lot more out there now. There's going to be a lot more, break program, they've got a lot of pre-disaster instead of waiting until it happens, pre-disaster about funding. So, you have to be, either have your own plan or be a part of it. Now, this is about six-hundred-and-seventy-five things to talk about. So, the county faces the consultants, and we meet with the consultant here, we keep it up every five years by law. We, we just probably set a vote on it. It's all funded through the counties, and we're now a part of it. The only thing that we have to do is somebody has to show up and fill out at least a couple of the documents, I fill them all out, make sure, and attend meetings, and I tend all meetings. So, just basically give them our community capabilities and what our wish list is. Obviously, we have flooding problems. I talked a lot about that in my report. You go into the plan, it's available through the county website. There's little snippets you can see in the reading, a lot of data to support this stuff. I do appreciate the doing that. I attended some hazard mitigation training in the end of the county class. Summer just performed surgery in three days, and was up there to talk about the director and the floral planning for the state, very good class. A lot of opportunities out there in the city. Want in the future to try to apply for some of that money. Caution, there's one way of a match, you know, there's a total of three. I'll be back probably, hopefully, in a few months. Our emergency operations plan is due for, to be re-promulgated. That one I write, so I'll have to finish that one. We have one, but I'll finish up, and we didn't have to break that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else? At this time, we have a time for public comment before we get started. All the rooms are on our doors, three-minute comment period for each person. Please conduct yourself in a generally tight fashion. We give everyone a chance to speak. Don't talk while someone else is speaking. And we plan on running an orderly public comment session. So, at this time, do we have any public comment? Yes, sir. Would you please take the podium, state your name and your address, please?
Hi, I'm Richard Ringer. I live in Uniontown, Uniontown address, but actually, North Union. Just wanted, this might be best addressed to Tim or the mayor. Just want to follow up on a previous resolution since the treasurer did not voluntarily resign. I guess the action was to seek additional help from the state. Just trying to get an idea of where that is right now.
Tim? So, to answer that question, that's correct. So, there was a resolution previously passed that in light of a number of factors that were included and recited in that resolution, the city council did request that the treasurer resign. That resignation was not tendered within the time period when it was requested, and therefore, a letter was sent to various state-level government officials to begin the process of formal removal. And that was pursuant to the third-classity code.
Is, is, is that letter available for, I imagine it's right-to-know?
So, so, yeah, that would be a publicly available letter, if anybody submits a right-to-know request, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other, any other public comment this evening?
Just a few questions about the.
Could you please state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, Carmina Taylor again from, we can't wait. Chief DeWitt, I just had a question about your report. This time, you mentioned there were seven-hundred incidences. Roughly how many were there in December? Were there more or less than seven-hundred?
It's, we typically run between six and seven-hundred, six and a half incidents a month.
Okay.
On average, maybe in the summer, it can tick up a little bit higher.
Okay, great. Mr. Billy, in terms of Resolution Twenty-two, and you've increased, you specified the increase in the bond requirements, does that mean that all those people that had that increase in bonding, do each of them have to be bonded now?
So, all, so, the people that are bonded on that list that we've upped the, the, the bond amount for are required people in the city that are bonded. Those people have been bonded. I think we are extending the requirement to anybody that deals with cash to be, and that's with the, all others included, with the employee, the employees, and also with the sewage office, and also the tax office. Those will be in addition.
So, the city clerk is bonded? And the deputy?
We are all bonded.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, and to answer that question for you, is that we have upped our bond as well.
No, I saw, that, that was my point. When you increased it, I was just, there was more names that I knew that were bonded here. So, the question was, because you increased it for all those levels?
Yes.
Were each of those people currently bonded? Or there's going to be some that are bonded?
All except for the additional one, I believe.
Right. And then, when you mentioned the increase in salary that increased the budget, do you know those positions that have been added to the budget that has increased it? Or should I do a right-to-know?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand your question.
You mentioned that you were, you are not, you were concerned about the budget, and you mentioned that over time, the budget has increased due to salary and benefits, right?
Oh, yeah.
Correct? Isn't that what I heard you say? So, who, do you know those?
So, there's collective bargaining agreements, those, and you, and you have to understand that all of the elected officials in the city are, their salaries are set. The only time that we can come back and increase those or decrease those salaries are, is in a situation that we did here today with an order that was from last January, or this past, this past month. And, you know, so the February fifteenth, that's the deadline to make any amendments to the, the, the budget and for those. So, with respect to all the elected officials, our salaries are set. The only people, the, in the city that get wage increases are, are the employees. And those are, are done through collective bargaining agreements. And the positions, and just like pretty much anywhere in any government, or it's much done like that in the county, where anyone in non-union, that kind of mirrors the union contracts, or whatever, whatever basically is negotiated for the union-represented employees, you, you would say that basically that would follow with respect to anybody non-union. So, but to answer your question, I think is what you're trying to get at is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that truly is that the elected officials' salaries are set, employees get their pay increases, and they're through contract negotiated bargaining.
So, that's not exactly what I was talking about. My time is up. I do want to talk to you about it, and I do want to ask for records, requests, because I, I, I did a records request for the financial statements for the last ten years of this place. And what I found very fascinating, because I compared it to Connersville and Alacquipa, because they're both third-class, correct? And there was delineation of salaries for employees, for expenditures, but there were opaque or vague or obscure for Uniontown. And so, my question isn't about union employees, about city employees. And you should know, since you're now the financing and accounting people, that the financial statements do not specify some of the city employees that are not necessarily union that have expenditures towards the budget. Their salaries are not disclosed. So, my question was, were the salary increases that increased the budget related to city employees?
So, at the beginning of, when we adopt the budget, we have a salary warrants that we pass. Everybody's salary in the city, all employees, whether they be salary or, or hourly, whether they are union, non-union, whether they're administration for management, we vote on that budget, and that is also public information as well.
Oh, right.
So, we've already set those.
Sure.
So, that is all, and, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you're, what exactly you're alluding to on that.
I'm alluding to that.
But, all of that is public information. And if you go back and, and look on WMBS and their previous meetings that they, that they air on Facebook and also on YouTube.
So, I can talk to you offline about it. I don't want to take out the time, and I want to be respectful, Mayor, as what you said. But it is significant. And what I, the main point I want to just draw is that the documents that are submitted to the state are not clear and delineated for the city council of Uniontown for the last ten years. That's the point. And if you're attributing to budget reductions and costs and over expenses, and you're adding to salaries about that, you have to look at the salaries that have been increased over ten years, and I can tell you that it's not union salaries. That's all. And I, I, I had a thing about the treasurer, but I'll just, because I just think fifteen-thousand dollars is in a living wage for anyone. So, you have now new people that are going to run for treasurer, and you're going to tell them they're going to make fifteen-thousand dollars for a whole year? That's all? Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Would you please take the podium, state your name and your address, please?
My name is Luke Maraz. I live in Uniontown on Princeton Avenue. And what I wanted to discuss was, again, something I, something I came here about before, was the water fluoridation of the Uniontown water systems. And what I had found out, oh, it's fine. I think you were out here before when I, when I brought this up, and I'll try to get to the point here. Basically, it's like a medicine, for anyone who doesn't know. It's added to our water, and there's a lot of questions about whether it's really beneficial and whether or not it's harmful at all. And many people feel like, you know, they don't have the option to remove it from their water easily, and a lot of communities are removing it. So, I looked, I looked into the, the process of how, you know, how we would get that stopped around here, and had to talk to a lot of different people. And basically, it's up to each community to decide, and the water company said they would need to hear from the highest elected official of each municipality served. Now, for us, that actually, for me at least, for my, what I'm trying to accomplish here, North Union, South Union, Manalan, and Dunbar Townships, and the City of Uniontown are all partially served by the Uniontown PA American Water Site. So, it would have to be, I guess, the township supervisors and the city council or the mayor who would have to confirm in writing. And so, what I wanted to bring up here is I have some information, just in case anyone would like to familiarize it with yourself a little bit. But what I wanted to, to pose to you was the question is, what would it take for this to be something that you would consider, at least like looking into? One of the supervisors actually said, they talked to someone that, that was involved with the water company, and they knew that, they found out that Uniontown was the one who initially put in the request to start the fluoridation. So, he suggested I talk to the city first, and, you know, because I agree that it's more likely that the other townships will, will be, want to be involved if they see that the city who requested it is unrequesting it, so. So, yeah, I don't know if it's something I would be like collecting signatures to bring to you, or if it's something that could put on an election ballot, or, you know. And I don't know if that's something that you could give me any answer on at this time, or if I should try to contact the office later, but that's, that's basically where I'm at with it.
So, so, I'm, I'm not sure everybody is at the table right now familiar of the past of what?
Sure.
The city may or may not have required. I, I'm not sure that the city would have been the one to require that, because I know there's actually higher-level state agencies that make those requests as well. So, for example, I know within the last, just from working with, with other water authorities and whatnot, within the last three months or so, one of the state agencies had actually put out a request for municipal authorities and water systems to increase fluoridation in their water. So, that wasn't a municipal decision. That was something that was done at the state level. You know, I think if, if there is a concern about it, you know, obviously, the folks here are able to do anything within their jurisdiction and their authority to do, they wouldn't be the ones formally to have any legal jurisdiction to require the water company to do anything different. But if there is a petition that would come in with, you know, a number of signatures, that's something that council could obviously receive and keep as part of its public record and even transmit to the water authority as well, then.
Okay. I, I haven't heard about that, that the increasing, but from what I understand, the actual Department of, DEP, Department of Energy?
Environmental Protection.
Environmental Protection, yeah. They said it is up to each individual community whether they want to fluoridate or not. And I think for a time, they actually, it was, you weren't allowed to stop fluoridating, but then they reversed that, I believe it was in two thousand four. And there's, the last few pages on there show the procedures that you would have to go through if you wanted to start or stop fluoridation. And I understand, like, you know, I'm just one person asking here, but that's what, that's why I'm trying to touch base and see, like, if this is something that we brought to the community, and it was something that they wanted to do, you know, where would be the next step from there? And it's, it's actually only about fifty percent of PA residents that are actually receiving it, and it's a very small number of those water systems. They're just some of the major water systems. I think less recently, State College, yeah, sorry. Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ringer. I have some comments here. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Take the podium, please state your name and your address, please.
Jim Santilli, South Union Township. I'm with the Uniontown Sons of Italy. You don't even have to put me on time, it's going to be real quick. On behalf of the officers that showed up tonight with me and the whole body of the Uniontown Sons of Italy, I want to thank the mayor and Mr. John for approaching us and asking us to get back involved with the Italian Heritage Festival. We are right now set for August twelfth and thirteenth. That's the dates that we were looking at. I have a personal wedding to attend on the nineteenth, so we can't do it then. So, we're pushing for that date. We've already been in contact with some vendors, with some entertainers. Now, all we need is help, and that's what I ask you guys for. Help us out. We got it. Tim, we got the contract from the last festival that we had nothing to do with. There's some tweaking, tweaking that has to be done with that, so.
So, you're looking for volunteers?
We're looking for the city to help in any way they can. That's.
Jim, we'll, we'll get together.
We'll get together.
We'll come out and meet.
Yeah.
Okay?
But thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
And, and just to touch base, so the twenty-thousand dollars that we had budgeted for events, the city doesn't have to pay for them. So, you know, when we move money out of line items, you know, it's for a reason. Again, we can get back to organizations in the community can be doing these events with the city of Uniontown as the venue. And, you know, again, I'd like to thank you guys for, and Mayor, and, and Mr. John as well for getting together and, and spearheading this. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Be resolved by the city council of the City of Uniontown. The council adjourned to meet Thursday, March second, twenty-twenty-three, at five P.M. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
Hey, man, Art Street, Evans Brothers. I'm getting all kinds of complaints.
Ken, Ken, what's that? You had the.